Good evening. In these extraordinary times, welcome to the September 28th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. First up is Trace, you got it?
I'm going to take over for Tracy if that's alright, she has Larry Jackson.
It's okay with me.
First matter, Appeal Number 2023-043, Christopher Ennis, 94, Maidstone Lane, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 601151-10.10, RB80 zoning. Proposed detached two-story garage with storage above. Applicant requests variances and relief from Chapter 301-29A1B. Where proposed side yard accessories setback eight feet, minimum required is 25 feet. And Chapter 301-31, where proposed impervious surface percentage is 26 percent, maximum is 15 percent.
Just raise your right hand please, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, selfie gun?
I do.
State your name.
Robert Stromsky, I reside at 44 Circle Drive in Jamesport. I'm acting as the architect for the property owner. I do have Mr. Ennis here to answer any questions if need be. I have the affidavits of posting and the mailings. And also the photographs of the sign the day it was put up and then another one today. Obviously this hearing was originally set for, I believe, August 10th, but due to some scheduling conflicts, we just had to postpone it. So what you have before you is an application for a 25 by 30-foot detached garage with storage space above. One of the things that we feel makes this project kind of unique to the setback that we're requesting is that the detached garage that we're proposing eight foot off the side yard is abutting the recharge basin for the development. So what would normally be an impact to a neighboring resident, we actually are proposing the garage in a situation where the recharge basin for the development would have the most impact of the project. The impervious surface is basically due to the development of the parcel with the house, the pool, patio, and driveway. The proposed garage really isn't adding much more in the way of impervious surface to the driveway that currently exists, so it's really the footprint of the garage and a little bit of asphalt driver that's being added that's adding to the impervious surface. So we don't feel that this is, you know, a request that would be uncommon in any area due to a lot of development with pools and driveways and so forth. The architecture of the detached garage is basically, we did a couple of reverse gables just to make it a little bit more aesthetic to the house. The second floor is just going to be used for storage. The height of the garage is a little higher due to the fact that we have a 13-foot ceiling height on the garage level and that's just for the potential for a car lift. The homeowner is just, you know, somebody who likes to work on cars and some accessory vehicles and so forth, so that's basically what we're here for. If you have any questions?
There already is a garage, there already is another garage. Attached to the house?
I have a garage underneath the roof.
That's attached, yes.
Yes, underneath the existing residence.
What size is that garage? Existing?
Eighteen by eighteen.
So I just have a question for you. One of the questions you always have to deal with is whether something was self-created or not? And what you wrote here is, "It's not self-created. The property was developed prior to the thought or need for a new detached garage. Currently out in the house, it will make it difficult to meet the set house." Try and understand how that's not self-created.
You have to get up, stay up. Just raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, selfie gun?
I do.
State your name and your address.
Christopher Ennis, 94, Maidstone Lane, Wading River, New York, 11792. I did the pool as soon as I moved into the house, that was about 10, 11 years ago. And then I have four kids, I have probably eight bicycles, all the other toys that they have to take up the garage space on my garage is really, I can't put a car in. So that's why I would like a detached garage.
So you have a two-car garage now though, right? Is that correct?
Excuse me?
You have a two-car garage now?
Yes, two-car garage.
And four kids.
And four kids, and two cats and two dogs.
You know, dealing with garage space right now, I have to laugh.
Can this garage be relocated anywhere else on the property?
Unfortunately, my property just behind the garage in the fence line, it really drops off, there's probably about a 10-foot slope there, so I'd have to build the property The only location that the garage may be is moved slightly closer to the pool, but if we were to move it at another location of the property, then we could also be increasing impervious surface, creating another driver to get there if we tried to propose an asphalt driveway. So with the existing, with the garage that we're proposing is we're trying to utilize the existing access to the property and the garage that's there. So really that spot is the only, you know, spot to be able to utilize the existing driveway because of the way the grades are.
There's a recharge basin, recharge, there is.
The only reason why we felt, you know, going close to the side yard was due to the fact that it was a recharge basin and really wouldn't...
Which we're looking at right now.
Is that a town recharge basin?
I don't know how that's, you know, once the development is done, I'm not, I don't know how legally what happens to the recharge basin with the developments, but according to the survey, it is the recharge basin of Birchwood Development, so I don't know if that was something that was deeded over to the town. Would have, would one of the mailings have been to the town? Because if so, that being an adjacent property owner, if it was the town of Rivet as a mailing, that might have been.
Alright, let's see if we've got a letter from, I mean, let's take a look if it's a recharge basin, I mean recharge basin.
I guess one other question is, does it have to be this size, right? Here as... In terms of, because you have a second floor in here as well, right?
Correct.
So 25 by 30. And you have 15 square foot worth of floor space there?
On the second floor.
Well, between the first one and the second.
Yeah.
So I mean, eight foot off, I'm just concerned about the precipice, this starts taking us down. Is there any way you can make it smaller?
Footprint wise or the height wise?
Oh, footprint wise, we'll begin with height wise, you're at 25 and change.
Yeah.
Why do you need the second floor?
I don't, I don't need the second floor, it's just for storage and to be honest, for extra storage, it's inexpensive to have the second floor down that building. So it's just, like I said, just an extra storage for...
You now have the other garage.
I guess I have another garage. One of the things I'd like to state is the second floor is not a true, true-story space. The second floor, the roof rafters are on the plate that are directly on the floor. So the only head height that we're getting is with the pitch of the roof is basically like a center cross where you would have, you know, a seven-foot height. So don't think of this as a 25 by 30 second floor that's fully usable at seven-foot high. So you can see that in the sections that were submitted along with the elevations, we're now proposing a two-story wall and then a roof on top.
The one that's attached, there's two-car garage?
Correct.
And this is two cars?
Yes.
One for each kid?
I have a few cars.
Well, I certainly appreciate having the one house with the garage and you can't get your car in the place, no way, no how.
It's because existing garage is underneath the house, it's only nine feet high, and I would like to be able to have someone to lift so I can lift the car up.
Alright. Let us ponder this for another meeting.
And so one question that was left open that you didn't answer, I believe Dan asked if you could make it smaller.
I can make the height smaller.
Could you make the dimensions smaller?
I could maybe shorten it a little bit, but the 25-foot width, you know, you kind of need to have two cars in to open up the doors comfortably and not hit the walls.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, yeah, the depth I could possibly make it smaller.
Okay. Let's put this off in the next meeting, let's just, we'll over this a little bit more and...
But you agreed to decrease the depth.
I could decrease the depth, yes.
Alright, let's go to the next meeting and see what you come back with and we'll make a decision.
Thank you.
Alright, let's have a reading.
So Mr. Chairman, with respect to Appeal Number 2023-043, I move that the appeal law of Christopher Ennis, 94 Maidstone Lane, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map 600-115-1-10.10, Residence B80, RB80 zoning, for variances and/or relief from Chapter 301-29A1B, proposed side yard accessory setback eight foot, minimum required is 25, and Chapter 301-31, proposed impervious surface coverage is 26 percent, maximum required is 15. The, I guess we would say...
Adjourned.
Adjourned?
No, adjourned.
No, just adjourned.
Seven twelve.
Ten.
Ten twelve. My birthday. Just write that down.
Ready that should go?
I'm a mistake, always been. I used to get my days off, not too much.
Somebody want to...
I'll second. Mr. Grisillo?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mrs. Zaweski?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we see you folks next meeting? Thank you. October 12th.
May proceed with the next application. Please. Appeal 2023-048, DCO, QOZB, 1309, OCR LLC, 1309 Old Country Road, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600122-2-2.1, Business Center zoning, proposed automobile dealership.
Thank you, Christopher.
Applicant requests variances and relief from Chapter 301-93A, where proposed impervious surface coverage is 78.35 percent, maximum permitted is 75 percent. Chapter 301-93A, Bolt Table Note 4, where proposed front yard unoccupied area is 15 feet, County Road 58, 15 feet from Osborne Avenue, minimum required is 35 feet. Chapter 301-93C1A, where proposed non-disturbed transitional side yard adjoining residential district and uses is 45.6 feet, minimum required is 50 feet. Chapter 301-93C1A, where proposed non-disturbed traditional rear yard adjoining residential district and uses is 10 feet, minimum required 50 feet. Chapter 301-94B1, where proposed number of parking stalls is 45, minimum required is 60. Chapter 301-249C4, where proposed front yard setback for freestanding signs is five feet, Osborne Avenue and County Road 58, minimum required is 15 feet. Chapter 301-249C4, where proposed side yard setback for freestanding side is 17 feet, minimum required is 25 feet. And finally, Chapter 301-249, where proposed number of primary signs, freestanding, is two, maximum permitted is one.
Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening.
Let's hear their story.
Good evening, Chairman McLaughlin, and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Christopher Kent from Farrell Fritz, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which I don't want to restate the applicant's name, but it's a lot of letters. Dennis and Company Holdings is acting on behalf of the applicant, and they're here this evening. I have Craig Ugrin and Keith Buddha and Mark Martaloda from the applicant, and also with us tonight are Perry Petrillo, the architect, the traffic engineer, Amanda LaRosa, and the site engineer, Anthony Stancanelli from Prometheus. Amanda LaRosa is from Stonefield. So the applicant, the applicant by Dennis and Company Holdings seeks variances from the board to allow the development of a new 18,023 square foot automobile dealership with service, repair, areas, onsite parking, lighting, landscaping, drainage, and new water and sewer connections on a 2.07 acre parcel known as 1309 Old Country Road in Riverhead. It's located within the Business Center, BC Zoning District, and Exhibit 1 in the handout that I gave you will help you locate the property. Oh, first of all, I wanted to acknowledge that I handed up the affidavits of mailing and posting of the property, also provided timestamped photographs of the posting dated when it was originally posted and also dated today. If you look at the aerials attached in Exhibit 2, you will see, it shows that the parcel is highly visible. It's an underutilized commercial property located within the town sewer and water districts, and it fronts on two roads. It has 216 feet of frontage on Old Country Road and 389 feet of frontage on Osborne Avenue. The frontage along Old Country Road has an existing sidewalk with a curb cut that starts at the western boundary of the property and extends eastward approximately 60 feet. The frontage along Osborne Avenue extends 389 feet from Riverhead Beverage to Sitco Gas Station without any curbing or sidewalks. This creates a dangerous through lot that is used frequently to avoid the traffic signal at Osborne and County Road 58 and directly, so that you can directly access Old Country Road if you're traveling north on Osborne Avenue without going through the light or waiting for the light, which is a long light if you've waited at that light before, I used to all the time. As you can see in Exhibit 2, the property is currently cleared and has several existing dilapidated commercial and industrial buildings that are used in connection with historic and existing truck and automobile sales, leasing, storage, and repair businesses on the premises. There are several paved and unpaved outdoor storage and parking areas on the property that do not comply with town standards. In addition, the property currently lacks proper sidewalks, curbing, drainage, and landscaping. Because of the unrestricted access in a heavily trafficked area, the property is currently unsightly and susceptible to unsafe crossover traffic, littering, dumping, and loitering. If you turn to Exhibit 9, which I think we also have here on the easel, you will see, they show that as of 2001, the entire property was cleared, except for a small strand of trees in the rear southeast corner of the property, adjacent to Osborne Avenue. Although some vegetation has regrown in the intervening 20 years, the vast majority of the site remains cleared, and there is effectively no non-disturbance buffer between the property and the residential properties to the east. You can see that over the years, if you scroll through those aerial photos, you can see over the years, the car and truck sales and storage has occurred with very little improvements except for the construction of a building extension that's now located within 10 feet of the eastern property, the boundary of the property. And if you go through that, you'll see that it was built sometime between 2010, I think it was 2010 and 2012, that building was constructed on the property. Exhibit 10 is the town planning, is a town planning board resolution from 2017 that granted preliminary approval of a site plan application by FKA 317 Properties LLC for a proposed auto showroom and related improvements to the property, including striped parking areas, curbing, and sidewalks on Osborne Avenue, landscaping, drainage structures, and other improvements. The approved plan did not include restoration or creation of any buffers with the properties to the east, and instead allowed a building to remain that's just 10 feet from that residential property line. In any event, that plan did not advance past the approval phase, and the property has remained in its present condition and use since that time with that building located 10 feet from the property line. Exhibit 4, if you go back to Exhibit 4, I'm sorry that it's out of order, but I wrote my narrative after I put together the exhibits. Exhibit 4 includes photos looking out from the property towards the surrounding properties to the north, east, west, and south, and the existing conditions on the property. You will see that the site is completely cleared with existing buildings that are to be demolished. Exhibit 5 includes current photos of the neighboring commercial properties and uses. Apple Honda to the west, on the other side of Osborne Avenue, Eagle Auto Mall to the north, Rocco's Pizza to the east, and the Riverhead Beverage to the south. These properties are for the most part cleared and paved. Attached as Exhibit 3, which I think we also have, do we have a board on that, Exhibit This shows other existing auto dealerships along Old Country Road that have front yard landscaping that is far less than what is required by town code. We're not looking to get anybody in trouble, but we're just looking to be treated similarly. Impervious surface on these properties are 80, 85, and two instances of 90 percent impervious surface that far exceeds the town code or what we're proposing. And in some instances where there is pervious surface areas, the grass areas along Old Country Road, are utilized to display vehicles, and other grass areas onsite at these locations are used to store vehicles. These dealerships have two or more signs on their premises, some instances they have three, and certain instances, the front yard setback for the ground signs are as little as one foot from the property line. And that's all depicted on that Exhibit 3 if you look through it. It's also, I think, on the board in front of us. In the matter before the board this evening, the applicant has submitted a site plan, which is attached as Exhibit 7, that is, with a site plan to construct an 18,023 square foot auto dealership on 2.07 acres, a property that is within the town sewer district and water district, and will be connected to town sewer. The proposed plan does require this application to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the relief stated by Ms. Prudenti. We're looking to permit 78.35 percent impervious surface coverage, where 75 percent is the maximum permitted, a 3.35 percent increase. We're looking to permit a 15-foot wide unoccupied front yard on Old Country Road and Osborne Avenue, where the 35 feet is the minimum unoccupied front yard permitted, to permit a 45.6-foot wide non-disturbed transitional side yard adjoining the residential district, where 50 is required, to permit a 10-foot wide non-disturbed transitional rear yard adjoining a residential district, where 50 feet is the non-disturbed transitional rear yard permitted, to permit 45 standard parking stalls, plus an additional 69 stacked parking spaces, where 60 standard parking stalls are required, to permit a five-foot signed setback in the front yard, where the minimum setback is 15 feet, and to permit a 17-foot signed setback in the side yard, which is Old Country Road in this instance, where the minimum stack setback required is 25 feet, and to permit two primary freestanding signs where one sign is permitted. And I'll go through what our rationale is for all of those requests. With respect to the statutory factors the board must consider pursuant to town law, the applicant provides the following. The property in its current condition is severely underutilized for a commercial property on County Road 58, with much of the site being used for disorganized outdoor vehicle storage. This fact coupled with the general appearance of the buildings, the existing buildings, and the lack of any landscaping or uniform buffers detracts from the streetscape along both Old Country Road and Osborne Avenue. Thus, as depicted in Exhibit 7, which is the site plan, the applicant submits that the proposed redevelopment of the site, under the current zoning code standards, will be an immediate and significant improvement to both the productivity of the property and the aesthetics along Old Country Road and Osborne Avenue. From an environmental perspective, the development will benefit the surrounding area by connecting to the town sewer and water districts, and installing onsite drainage, which is lacking on the site, and by adding and maintaining landscaping and consistent buffers where there is currently very little vegetation on the property. The variances... The variances requested will not detract from the benefits added by the proposed development. The 3.35% variance for impervious coverage, which is literally paving areas previously cleared and utilized for automobile and truck sales and storage, is minimal, and it's less than most car dealerships on Old Country Road, and will be imperceptible when you look at the site from its current condition to what's being proposed. The applicant will provide appropriate drainage drought that will ensure that all impervious surfaces are properly drained and stormwater will now be retained on-site. Although the relief for the unoccupied front yards on Old Country Road and Osborne Avenue appears substantial, it should be noted that there are presently no yards and no landscaping along either street frontage. Therefore, the addition of 15 feet of landscape yards with street trees, as depicted in Exhibit 8, which is the landscape plan, will be a significant improvement to the property. The variance requested for the undisturbed transitional southern side yard, providing 45.6 feet, where 50 feet is required, the relief of 4.4 feet is minimal. In contrast to the current condition, which consists of deciduous shrubs and low-lying vegetation along the southern and southeastern property lines, the plan provides a 45-foot area of sod and three columnar cherry trees surrounded by arborvitae buffer along both the sides and rear property lines. Moreover, the southern boundary of their property, which adjoins an existing commercial use, the Riverhead Beverage Center, which has an existing building within 10 feet of the boundary line with the same adjacent residential uses. The variance requested for the undisturbed transitional rear yard adjoining the residential zone properties may sound substantial, 40 feet. However, again, there is currently no maintained buffer along the eastern side of the property, which has been entirely cleared at one time. The proposed dealership building will be significantly, will be significantly farther back than the less than 10 feet that is currently, oh, excuse me. Skip the page or somehow. I bet you're disappointed with that, Fred, that I skipped the page. The applicant will provide appropriate, oh, just dismissing, 10 feet from the southern boundary that it shares with the same adjacent residential use. That has to do with Rocco's building, which is next door. That building has disturbed area right up to the property line. The Riverhead Beverage Center has disturbed area right up to the property line. We are going to create a buffer between our property and theirs, and our building that we're proposing to construct will be over 55 feet from the property line, although the buffer is only a 10-foot landscaped buffer with arborvitae. With respect to the parking variance, the 15 stalls, the 45-stripe stalls to be provided will be sufficient for both expected customer and employee parking needs. The plan also provides an additional on-site parking area for 69 vehicles to be utilized for automobile inventory and, if necessary, employee parking. The showroom also includes an area for five additional display vehicles. With respect to the front and side yard setback variances for the proposed sign on Old Country Road, the proposed location of the sign is necessary for visibility, particularly on a visually congested road such as Old Country Road. The proposed location is also consistent with the setbacks of other commercial and automobile dealership signs in the area. Moving the proposed sign farther from the property lines is not feasible, because the sign would be obstructed by tree, street trees that we're going to plant, and parked vehicles, and would require the removal of planned parking stalls. Finally, the second primary freestanding sign is needed, because the property has secondary frontage on Osborne Avenue, and the front of the proposed dealership faces away from the street. Therefore, the additional sign on Osborne Avenue is necessary for informational and traffic direction purposes from Osborne Avenue. It should be noted that the second sign will be roughly half the size of the true primary sign located on Old Country Road, and this will mitigate any impact associated with allowing the second primary sign. The scope and extent of the relief required is largely attributed to the property's irregular shape and the applicant's particular need for extensive hardscapes to support the parking for the dealership's inventory, and to a lesser degree, its customer parking. Nevertheless, the applicant has developed the proposal for the, before the board, in an effort to balance the viability of the project with the need to bring the property into conformity with the town's zoning standards. The design before the board is the most feasible iteration of the development, notwithstanding that it requires several variances. Moreover, in considering, considering none of the variance requested will negatively impact the surrounding properties or the zoning district, the applicant respectfully requests that the variances be granted. Arguably, the need for the variances is self-created, and that the property is being completely redeveloped. However, the property's irregular shape and location next to a residential district make full compliance with the zoning code extremely difficult, particularly for a proposed automobile dealership, which is a permitted use in the BC zoning district, and the continuation of the existing use on the property that requires significant hardscapes. In any event, the fact that the required relief is self-created is not determinative for finding on the variances requested. So for all these reasons, and the reasons to be presented, any other answer, questions that we may answer, we ask that we, that you grant the relief requested. Do you have any questions, Fred, for me or for anybody on the, for any of our people?
Do we have any letters of support from your neighbors?
No, but I could get, definitely get one from Rocco's Pizza, because they've been very supportive.
I bet.
Can I just ask a few questions?
Yes.
So your Exhibit number 11, that was for a used auto sales facility. Did that require any variances, that application? Are you aware?
Number 11?
Yeah, your Exhibit number 11, it was the 2017 preliminary site plan approval for used auto sales.
Oh, that's Exhibit 10, yes.
Oh, 10, sorry.
I'm sorry, I opened 11 up, okay. That did not require any variances, but at the same time, they weren't asking, I mean, they didn't ask for variance for the building that's 10 feet from the property line, which was added.
Just asking.
Sometime between, no, I'm trying to answer the question, sometime between 2007, 2010 and 2012.
And I know in that grant of preliminary site plan, the ARB did want to see landscaping added and to be redone, right?
Yes. They had some perimeter landscaping, but they didn't have any buffer along the eastern boundary. They had some perimeter landscaping along Osborne Avenue, some street trees on Old Country Road, and some trees along the Sitco Gas property, is what's shown on. There is a site plan attached to that Exhibit 10. It's smaller, though, it's hard to see.
It's very small.
Yeah, we have a full-size one here if you'd like to see it. And all the existing non-conformances remained on the property. The 24, the big barn is only 24 feet from the property line, and there was an addition, an extension of the building added that is 10 feet from the property line. In the back, we do have, we do have a rendering of the building as Exhibit 12.
In addition to Rocco's, could you ascertain if you can get letters of support from the neighbors who are immediately to the back?
Okay, we did notify them all, none of them responded. We didn't get any phone calls from anyone.
Tracy, we didn't get anything from any of the neighbors. Aren't any neighbors here?
Chris, on 12, it says Eagle Auto Dealership Remodeling.
Yeah, that's just, I just noticed that myself. That should state this, Eagle Auto Dealership Remodeling is across the street. This is just mistagged. This is the building on the south side, and it's referencing the remodeling that's going on on the north side that was already approved.
This is your building, though?
This building that's in the rendering is our proposed building. And it's our proposed lot.
Too early to know what kind of car it's going to be, right?
That's still, there's still negotiations over what type of dealership.
Anyone else out, out there to be heard on this matter? Anyone on Zoom?
They need a secret determination.
Yeah, we need to take our time. So, okay, let's adjourn us to the next meeting. I'm sorry, anybody else?
Yeah, so this has been determined to be a type 1 action. So the Zoning Board of Appeals would like to leave the hearing open and adjourn it. It's my understanding, I think we should put it for, to allow enough time. Can you give me the, either the last day of October or the first one in November?
Get the secret report back.
Yes, we need a resolution from the planning board.
Right. So I think if it's all right with you, we'll put it on for the 9th, because I'm more confident that the zoning board could make a determination.
Okay, all right, thank you. And if you have any other questions, in the meantime, please address them to us.
November 9.
I make a motion to adjourn this matter until November 9 and make a secret determination.
And we'll leave the hearing open.
We'll leave the hearing open.
All right, Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we'll see you folks in November.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And proceed with the next matter.
You certainly may.
Appeal number 2023-049, Habitat for Humanity, 508 St. John's Place, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-126-429, RA40 zoning, proposed single-family home. Applicant requests variances and relief from Chapter 301-11, where proposed front yard setback is 40 feet, minimum allowed is 50 feet. Chapter 301-11, where proposed sod yard setback is 8 feet, minimum allowed is 25 feet. Chapter 301-11, where proposed combined sod yard setback is 16 feet, minimum allowed is 55 feet. Chapter 301-11, where proposed rear yard setback is 47 feet, minimum allowed is 60 feet. And finally, Chapter 301-11, where proposed impervious lot coverage is 22.8%, minimum allowed is 15%.
If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, oh, my God.
I do.
And if you kindly state your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Chris McNamee, 330 Birchwood Road, Medford, New York, 11763.
You're on the floor.
Thank you. I am the Director of Construction with Habitat Humanity, appearing for our architect's way. This lot that we're seeking relief for was deeded to Habitat from the town of Riverhead for the purpose of building affordable housing. It's an undersized lot, so we can't proceed with that variance. So I will read you what the architect said need to read. This application, as noted in the initial presentation, is for a small Cape Cod house, 34 by 24, with a 6.5-foot by 4-foot covered entry in the front. Residents will have one bedroom on the first floor and two bedrooms on the second floor. The property is on a 40-foot wide by 125-foot in-depth lot. The house area is 1,070 square feet, which is smaller than the 1,200 square feet allowable, but is adequate considering the size of the lot and the typical needs of a Habitat Humanity applicant. The property is Zoned RA40 and is an undersized lot. Setbacks cited on the architect's plans are from the Affordable Housing setback guidelines indicated in the RA40 zoning ordinance. It is noted that the parcel is in single and separate ownership, the lot being transferred from the town of Riverhead to Habitat in 2021. Habitat does not own nor have any interest in any of the surrounding properties. As part of the subdivision package, we have a copy of the single separate search here, as well as a copy of the current survey and letter for the presentation of the board. In our submissions, I have submitted Suffolk County GIS web map showing the tax parcels in the area, which do indicate smaller lot sizes to this one, to a distance of 500 feet as indicated by the red lines on the maps. In addition, I have submitted an aerial photograph of this area to 500 feet from the subject parcel as well. The development patterns in this area show similar houses on the east side of the East Avenue extension, as indicated on the maps, as well as the neighboring lots to the north and south. It is noted that the proposed construction is smaller in shape and size than the existing residences to the north and south of the project site. So the new construction will lessen the impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. This new construction will bring a desirable change to the area by bringing in newly constructed home under ownership by the person purchasing the house from Habitat under their programs. This benefit sought by the variance cannot be achieved by some other method. To match the sizes of the neighboring houses to make the home larger is not a viable alternative from an economic standpoint, as well as the increasing impact on the surrounding parcels and the general area. The size of the house is still large enough for a three-bedroom house with reasonable living and dining spaces, while being extremely energy-efficient and living-friendly over an extended period of time, which is a goal for Habitat in the construction. The requested area variance to the current zoning is considered to be substantial, but given the existing development, it is in line with the current construction pattern for these tax lots. The proposed variance will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the district. I would submit that the new construction type, and since it is in the sewer district, that the construction is a step forward in the environment of the neighborhood by using a house that will use less energy with limited impact on the local sewer district. The alleged difficulty is considered self-created and created by the proposed construction of the site. That is the case with all proposed construction. That does not preclude the board on granting the variances. Habitat Humanity believes in the generational wealth that real estate creates for our buyers and their families. However, they limit the amount the buyer can profit upon the sale of the home by attaching a 30-year mortgage for the home's equity, which pays itself off over a 30-year period. Our homes must remain occupied at all times. The additional grants and mortgages on the home are transferable only if the future owners of the income of the home are income eligible. That concludes my presentation. That was my testimony and the pictures into the record. Thank you.
Could you tell me what was the square footage of the home? I apologize, I don't have the code book with me.
Required is 1,200.
Right, and the relief didn't include that. So you can deem it if you want, add that relief to the application and consider it.
That's fine, okay, yeah. Yeah, just write that up. Let's, is anybody to be heard on this matter? Anyone on Zoom? Someone will have a reading for you and we'll get you out of here.
Excuse me?
We have a reading.
Just give me two minutes.
Every bedroom's three or four?
Three bedrooms. It's a cape, so two up and one down.
Not really related, just curious, what's the construction of this last Habitat one we had, I think it was a cement floor?
Yes, that's our other lot that we also just received the variance for. That is a 3D-printed house. This one is a regular Cape-style house with the second floor integrating into the trusses. We received both of those parcels at the same time from the town.
So Mr. Chairman, with respect to appeal number 2023-049, I move that the appeal of Habitat for Humanity at 508 St. John's Place, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-126-439, in residence A40, RA40. in residence A40 RA40 zoning for variances and relief from chapter 301-1 where proposed front yard setback is 40 foot, minimum allowed is 50 foot. Chapter 301-11 where proposed side yard setback is eight foot, minimum allowed is 25 foot. Chapter 301-11 where proposed combined side yard setback is 16 foot, minimum allowed is 55 foot. Chapter 301-11 where proposed rear yard setback is 47 foot, minimum allowed is 60 foot. Chapter 301-11 where proposed impervious lot coverage is 22.8% and maximum allowed is 15%. Also included is required relief from the square footage requirement of 1,200 square foot versus 1,070. Versus the 1,070 being prepared or proposed be granted in accordance with the applications, sketches, and amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Shall move.
Second.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zoweski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So continue on with your good work and we'll see you next time around.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next appeal. Appeal 2023-050 Heather Turbisch, 10 Hickory Court, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-36-2-7 RB80 zoning, proposed detached two-story garage to be built into ground. First floor to be used as a garage, second floor storage only. Applicant requests variances and relief from chapter 301-29A1B where proposed accessory to side street setback is five feet. Minimum allowed is 60 feet. And chapter 301-31 where proposed impervious surface coverage is 30%, maximum allowed is 15%.
So you win again. You swear to tell the truth, not to put the truth out before God?
I do.
Again, Mr. Stromsky, state your name and your address.
Robert Stromsky, I reside at 41st Circle Drive in Jamesport. We're acting as the architect for the owner and applicant. What we have before you is a proposed detached structure of 30 by 40 with also storage space above that. I don't know if many of you know, but Mr. Turbisch does racing at the Riverhead Raceway. The primary use for this garage is to house and to work on the two race cars. The storage space that's above is also going to be used primarily for the storage of parts, body panels, machinery that's used to tool things on the race cars and so forth. One of the issues right now is where Mr. Turbisch's car is currently located. The property is looking to be sold and he needs to relocate where he houses the vehicle. Being that he has the house, he would love to have it on his property where it's more convenient for him to be able to work on the car and be home. And his wife would love to have that, I'm sure, maybe. So what you have here is basically...
I'm sure you just enjoy making lunches for all these hobos that come over there to help out. Okay.
So essentially, that's what you have here. In the area, we actually foiled, there's two properties that are also on the paper road. One of the things we'd also like to bring to the board's attention is the setback that we have here is for what is considered Locust Lane. We feel it's a paper road, it's not utilized. Essentially, I don't know why the road was created due to the fact of how the development is. Because everybody that's around that neighborhood could be accessed by other avenues of Hickory Court and of also Northside Road. I don't particularly need, you know, see the need for this Locust Road, paper road. We foiled two other parcels that are on Locust Road. They happen to be on the corner of Northside Road and Locust. One of the parcels has a pre-existing three-car garage that has a 4.5-foot setback to this paper road. And then we also have a main single-family residence that has a setback of 9.8 to Locust, to Locust Lane. So we feel that this is a setback to Locust Lane that isn't out of character to what's in the neighborhood. And I think a lot of that is due to the fact that Locust Lane is truly a paper road that's really not utilized, and I don't even see that need in the future. And I think it will just exist as it is, as vacant property.
So the, one of the properties that you refer to with the three-car garage, is that their only garage or is it their second garage? This is a second proposed garage, correct?
Correct.
And what is the size of the present garage?
I believe the present garage is 24 by 26, according to the footprint of the site plan.
So just allowing you to answer my question, sorry I interrupted you.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the actual use of the main residence. I don't believe there's a, there looks to be an asphalt right up to the house. I didn't particularly look at the property. Basically, we just looked at an aerial, narrow view of the neighborhood. We decided to foil just to see what the actual setback was, to see if it was something that was done lawfully, pre-existing, just so that we could at least show precedence in the area that we weren't the only. So I don't know the current use.
Okay. I mean, I was obviously asking because this is for a second garage substantial, very substantial size. So that's why I asked if in those other properties, there were two garages.
Again, that I don't know. I know, as I just stated to the board, that this is a unique situation and that there is a primary use for this detached garage. It's not for use of the family vehicle. Mr. Turbisch has two race cars, a trailer, a dual-axle truck that pulls the trailer. You know, the detached garage is, you know, primarily solely going to be used to house the race car, to be able to work on it and do it. That's his hobby, that's his love.
And that's his weekends.
His probably weekends, weeknights, and just about every other free minute the man has.
I'm sure.
Rob, this is a very large project. I don't know where I am on it, but accordingly, the existing driveway is about 1,700 square feet and the proposed driveway is 45 square feet. That's a dominant feature of this lot now.
It's due to the fact of the, we need the two lanes to get back to the detached garage. With the way that the site is and the geography, we felt that we wanted to push the garage towards the back of the property. If we look to shorten the length of the driveway, which could be done, but we also have the trailer and the truck that would need to be housed on the driveway that has a substantial length to it. We feel that we could start having an accessory structure in the side yard or possibly in the front yard if we start trying to pull it closer to Hickory Court. So we felt that tucking it in the back would be beneficial to the appearance because you really wouldn't see it from the street.
Why couldn't you utilize the existing driveway?
Because of the grades, the existing driveway raises up, I would say, a good six to seven feet. The grade at the street is at 116. The grade at the top of the driveway is 122. So that's a six-foot grade difference. With a long trailer and a race car, it's really not advantageous to try to back up a race car on a trailer on an incline of six feet in that length of distance. And we are trying to, because we're looking at a two-story structure, we felt that if we were to take the garage structure and drop the grade of it, that we would reduce the appearance of the height by kind of burying some of the garage in the existing grade and not trying to leave it on the existing grade utilizing the driveway. One of the things also, just when it was brought to mention on the size, I believe the current garage was, what, 28 by, 28 by 32?
How many children do you guys have?
No, I'm saying where the race car is now, 28 by 32, and that's not enough.
How many children do you have? None? Okay, just asking. You're just gonna take up the other two garages, that's all. Not that I'm pushing you guys.
So just to be clear, where he's currently storing the race cars is 28 by 32?
And it's not big enough. There's an additional trailer on the outside of that footprint where they use for parts and so forth. So they're kind of busting out of the seams of where they are, and that's why he's proposing the size of the structure that he has.
Did we receive anything on this application?
Was the design of the building itself provided?
I'm sorry?
Did you guys provide a design of the potential rendering of the building?
Uh, there are some elevations I could have.
So those are just the elevations, but I'm trying to understand, is this a morton building? What exactly is going up there?
It's a wood, it's a wood frame structure like any other construction, a frame structure.
Okay. All right, and then...
Does it have a second floor?
The second floor would be engineered trusses or engineered I-beams that'd be able to make that span.
For pulling out the engines and whatever you have to do.
Yeah.
Got you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what? Okay. Tracy just has to correct the record. She did receive an email on this application. Okay.
You want to read it?
So there was an email expressing a concern of the homeowner's desire to use this structure for a cat rescue. Do you have any knowledge of that?
I don't know of there. I think we may have been notified that there was an email or a neighbor questioning something like that. Obviously, Heather is here that she can attest to that, but I believe Heather is a volunteer for a rescue operation that operates at a different address. And she has the vehicle in her driveway. And I'd like to bring Heather up so she could kind of explain, you know, her relationship to that organization and what she does.
Heather, if you kindly raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, not to put the truth out before God?
Yes.
Now, just pull that microphone down just a little bit. Perfect. Now, young lady, so you worked for a volunteer for...
I'm a volunteer for a nonprofit 501(c)(3) animal rescue organization that traps feral cats in the town of Riverhead, spays and neuters them to prevent them from repopulating, and then they are returned to their colonies.
So you know Sue Denovsky?
Absolutely.
Oh, for sure. Now, how do cats get along with high-octane engines?
They won't be with the high-octane engines.
Thank you.
And...
You've said enough.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So...
Oops, sorry.
You are aware you are not permitted to utilize this property as a cat rescue?
The cat rescue is not a shelter. It is entirely a trap-neuter-return program. The cats are trapped, spayed and neutered, and returned back to their colonies.
Did you communicate with neighbors in your area asking them if they objected to you utilizing this proposed structure as a cat rescue?
No, we did not communicate with them.
You did not?
No.
Okay. I also wanted, so a neighbor also expressed concern having a structure of that size, large paved driveway, on the impact to drainage.
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 That's okay, no, you have to read it in, that's fine. Okay, anyone else to be heard on this matter? Anyone on Zoom? Should we have a reading? Anybody have any problems?
I like cats.
Well, good for you, Rob.
I move that the appeal of Heather Turbisch, 10 Hickory Court, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-36-2-7, Residence B80 RB80 zoning for variance and relief from chapter 301-29A1B where proposed accessory to side street setback is five foot, minimum allowed is 60 feet. And chapter 301-31 where proposed impervious surface coverage is 30%, maximum allowed is 15%. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches, amendments thereto, any filed with the building inspector.
Second.
All right, Mr. Zoweski?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Aye.
And I say aye. So your appeal's been granted. Best of luck with everything, keep up with the cats. And good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next appeal. Appeal 2023-051 Mark Lemania, Lucherito's Restaurant Site Plan, 131 West Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-128-3-16, PRC zoning, proposed side addition to porch for use as a restaurant. Applicant requests variances and relief from chapter 301-162. Proposed side yard setback is 7.25 feet. Minimum required is 15 feet.
Good evening, I'm Mark Lemena, 8 Mystic Court.
You swear to tell the truth, not to put the truth out before God?
Yes.
All right, Mark, now you can tell your name and your address.
Mark Lemena, 8 Mystic Court. Sorry, I was eager.
I don't blame you. We will see. Okay, you've got the floor.
We're renovating the...
Pull up the microphone up and get a little closer to him.
We're looking to renovate the building at 131 West Main Street, bring it back to life, turn it into a hustling, bustling restaurant. 33 indoor seats, 60 seats outside. This plan that we're presenting today is, I believe, the setback issue. And a deck that we're looking to wrap around to the west side of the building. So that's what you have in front of you today.
Okay.
What's on the second floor?
Office space.
Was it used before for housing or at all?
I believe so.
Okay.
I believe it was a birthing house, there was...
When did you, when did you take over?
A year, maybe two months ago.
Year and two months? Okay, so you have no more housing there, it's office space over?
It's office space and a custom apparel shop of my own.
Customer power shop?
We make our own shirts and uniforms.
Okay, I got you. All right.
You cleared some of that property, correct?
I cleared what was dead.
What was that?
In the rear. When we took over the property, the back property, you couldn't walk to the water line because there was fallen trees, so we removed the fallen trees.
Well, you are aware in this zoning district, a minimum of 50% of the lot is to be kept open, natural, undisturbed. So it's likely you're gonna have to, quote, restore vegetation.
Yes, that's part of our, that's part of our plan.
Okay.
Okay. Well, so far, so good. Let's see. All right, sports fans.
You have to get all your approvals, like Health Department?
Working on Health Department.
You're working on those, you have any of those approvals yet, or?
Not yet.
And you're counting on parking across the street, I guess, because it's in the parking district, right?
Correct.
Now, do we have to wait for any of their approvals, or?
No. This is subject to?
Okay, subject to.
All right. I wrote it down.
All right, anyone else to be heard on this matter? Nobody on Zoom? Okay.
Can we ask what kind of restaurant?
I do Tex-Mex, we have five restaurants currently, we also have Burgercade in Downtime Riverhead, and we have Good Juju's in Aquabob. So I don't know which one it's gonna be. Which one do you want?
I'll let you know when I get there.
All right.
All right, anybody else to be heard on this matter on the separate reading?
Mr. Chairman, with respect to appeal number twenty-two-three-dare-zero-five-one, I move that the appeal of Mark Lemania, one-thirty-one West Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six-hundred dash one-twenty-eight dash three dash sixty, in the Pottick River Community PRC zoning, for variances and or relief from chapter three-oh-one dash one-sixty-two, the proposed side yard setback is seven-point-two-five feet, and minimum required is fifteen feet. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches, with amendments thereto, if any, filed with the building inspector, and recognize that this is subject to still DECC, CAC, LPC, ARB, Suffolk County Health Department approvals. So move.
Second. All right, Mr. Zoweski?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Gazzola?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so your appeals are granted. Keep on making the good sandwiches and continue on making Riverhead a little better than us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, board.
Next matter?
Let's go.
Appeal twenty-two-three-dare-zero-three-five, Driftwood Family Farms LLC, three-seven-nine-five Middle Country Road, Calvertin, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six-hundred dash one-seventeen dash one dash three, industrial C zoning interpretation of code. Applicant requests to appeal code enforcement determination and action appearance ticket six-two-nine-one, which is asserted to be issued in error because of the continued vested agricultural use at the subject property, and alternatively based on the determination of zoning board of appeals number zero-nine dash five-eight, interpretation finding that the applicant has vested rights under the formal industrial A zoning district. This hearing, this matter was heard on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Counsel for applicant requested that it be held open for the submission of documents. Let the record reflect that by applicant's counsel, we did in fact receive invoices dated nine-four, twenty-twenty-three, nine-seven, twenty-twenty-three, nine-eleven, twenty-twenty-three, nine-fourteen of twenty-twenty-three, and nine-nineteen of twenty-twenty-three.
Evening, counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Armentano from Farrell Fritz. We are here on a continuation of that hearing. We did submit the invoices as requested, they are part of your record. You know, we're here to finalize the issue. You know, our main points were raised at the last hearing, you know, one point that we'd like to reiterate is that this is an agricultural use in agricultural district. We are requesting, under your authority, under two-sixty-seven-A-four, that you modify the ticket that was issued by the building department, and that we are continuing an agricultural activity, to the extent that that is what we are requesting that may be permitted to continue that agricultural activity. We've submitted case law to this effect, and we're here to answer any questions, and we can elaborate if that's necessary.
Well, first off, I'd like to apologize, I should have had you guys up first, but I didn't see the schedule to later on.
I wanted to watch Chris anyways.
Yeah, anyway. Any other questions from the board? All right, we've made a decision.
So we're officially gonna close?
We're gonna close the, and hearing, and have a reading. Driftwood Family Farms, thirty-seven ninety-five Middle Country Road, Calvertin, for interpretation, I'm sorry, industrial C zoning, for interpretation of zoning ordinance, or ordnance, appearing, appearance ticket number sixty-two ninety-one, issued by code enforcement for conducting prohibitive use within industrial C zoning of the district, within the town of Riverhead. Permits or approvals? Applications, applicant states that the continued vested agricultural use at the subject property, and alternatively based on the discrimination, determination of zoning board oh-nine dash fifty-eight, interpretation finding that the applicant had vested rights under the former industrial A zoning district has been denied based on the zoning board's consideration of the following. The appearance ticket sixty-two ninety-one issued on October of twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, by code enforcement stated the conduct of, conduct of prohibitive use within the industrial C zoning use district without town of Riverhead permits or approvals for property located at thirty-seven ninety-five Middle Country Road, Calvertin, New York, tax map zero-six-zero-zero-one-seventeen dash one dash three. The subject property, thirty-seven ninety-five Middle Road, Calvertin, New York, is located within the industrial C zoning district. The subject property, thirty-seven ninety-five Middle Road, Calvertin, New York, is located within the established Suffolk County Agricultural District. The applicant submitted a site plan on August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, for nursery, tree nursery, agricultural soil, and mulch production. The property was the subject of ZBA zero-nine dash fifty-eight, is located at thirty-eight twenty-nine Middle Country Road, Calvertin, New York. The applicant seeking relief in the zoning, in ZBA number zero dash, zero-nine dash fifty-eight, related to the vested rights in building, trade, shop, and export, the import of materials related to and accessory use of the property of a building, trade shop, not agricultural use of the property. The applicant seeks relief of ZBA number zero-nine dash fifty-eight, had filed a site plan in two thousand and one, predating the updated comprehensive master plan. The industrial C use district, chapter three-oh-one dash one-twenty-two, does not list agricultural production as a permitted use or specialty permit use. Town code, chapter number three-oh-one dash twenty-two-two-two dash C, provides no non-conforming use may be reestablished where such non-conforming use has been discontinued for a period of one year. In addition to the above, the zoning board of appeals considered the testimony and documents submitted by the applicant and applicant's counsel. The zoning board acknowledges that at some time prior to two thousand and twelve, and prior to the zoning change related to two thousand and oh-three and two thousand and oh-four, updated the town's comprehensive master plan, the former Z family-owned and used property for agricultural production. The applicant stated that he has used the property for growing grass and hay in May of two thousand and twenty-three, began using the property to grow privet. According to statements made by the applicant and the applicant's son, prior to purchase of the property in two thousand and twelve, the property was not used for agricultural production and was littered and filled with debris, preventing cultivation of the land. The applicant was asked to provide documentation, i.e. tax returns or filings with the state or the town, or some proof of demonstrating continuous use of the property for agricultural production, and refuting statements and reports contained in news articles and correspondence. Town Board resolution and minutes contain, and minutes, and the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets determination dating back to two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, evidencing that the period, for a period of more than one year, the property was not used for agricultural production. At the applicant's request, the zoning board of appeal held a meeting, open to permit applicant to submit proof of agricultural production, to establish continued use of the property for agricultural production necessary for the consideration of pre-existing non-conforming use. The applicant did not submit to zoning board. The applicant did submit for the consideration of pre-existing non-conforming use. The applicant did not, did, the applicant did submit, did submit, and the zoning board did review the invoices dated nine-four twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, nine-seven, two thousand and twenty-three, nine-eleven, two thousand and twenty-three, nine-fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three, and nine-nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three, for natural mulch, leaf compost, and screening topsoil. Based upon the above zoning board of appeals determinations that the applicant has failed to provide sufficient proof of continued vested agriculture use of the property, and the applicant has failed to demonstrate the ZBA number zero-nine dash fifty-eight establishes or supports vested right, supports a vested right to use a property located thirty-seven ninety-five Middle Road, Calvertin, New York, for agricultural production or for any such permitted use under the former industrial A zoning district, and consequentially, consequentially, the zoning board of appeals shall not overturn the appearance ticket of sixty-two ninety-one based upon the reliance of vested rights in the agricultural production or industrial A zoning, notwithstanding the above. Thirty-seven ninety-five Middle Road, Middle County Road, Calvertin, New York, is located in agricultural district, and as such may be used for agricultural production. Finally, the zoning board of appeals will not usurp the role of the justice court, and the justice court is the appropriate venue to address the issues related to the appearance ticket of sixty-two ninety-one, and use of the subject property for import and or export of material for sale as relationship the agricultural production as of the date of issuance of the appearance ticket. Second. All right. Mr. Zoweski?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Gales, uh, thank you.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so you've been denied. Back to the?
I understand, I mean, on or off the record, my understanding of what was just read, I understand what was said, but you did state in the notwithstanding clause that agricultural activity can continue. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Yes, that's perfect. Yes, I understand.
So what I'd like to do is I know you submitted a packet, a second appeal. I'm directly on that issue, so I'd like to return it to you together with the check.
I don't think it's, I agree, I think it's a moot point, yes.
That's right.
Thanks very much. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Last matter?
You folks are here? No.
No. Oh, can you come up to the mic? I apologize.
All right, just pull that microphone down and speak right into it.
So speak over it?
No, right into it.
Okay, my name is Denise Betts, we're residences at the twenty-one-way Groban in the Highlands at Aquabog, and I had called and talked to it, Tammy, after numerous other people at town hall a few weeks ago about a safety issue, a traffic safety issue, and she put me on the agenda for today at nine-thirty, Traffic Safety Committee, and that's why we're here at this hour.
You sure it wasn't nine-thirty in the morning?
Nine-thirty a.m.
No, she said eight-thirty p.m. Eight-thirty p.m. I even asked her, I says, are you sure you're open? She goes, it's eight-thirty p.m., ma'am. She says you don't have to be there. She says it would be, but I says, I do want to be there because I really want to elaborate on why this is so important to me.
Ma'am, this is the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, so was that already done? Did that, you had?
I think, I think our wonderful attorney's giving you the info right now.
So, I'm to, uh, Brian Morris from Steve, and Tracy and I will try to, uh?
Clarify this.
Yeah, I, find out where?
She was lovely, everybody I actually spoke to were very, very, accounting helped to want to push this and help me with this, and they understood my plea, but I certainly wanted to be at the meeting, which I thought was.
We'll follow up.
Okay, so?
I have a final matter.
I know.
May I? So, final matter, appeal twenty-two-three-dare-oh-four-six, Kevin Barrett, one Oakwood Drive, Manorville, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six-hundred-one-four-six dash one, twenty-two-point-six. This matter, the hearing was opened on September fourteenth, the applicant requested an adjournment until October twelfth.
So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we hear a motion to set the minutes of the last meeting?
So move, Mr. Chairman, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
That adjournment was ten-twelve?
Ten-twelve.
And again, I don't want to reiterate it, but it is my part.